Thank you for taking time out of your schedules when you could have been somewhere else and doing some other things. And so again, we just want to thank you for being here with us tonight. I wanted to have this public safety town hall because I think it is very important that as we are continuing to grow in the county, that we can understand the importance and the significance of having public safety in our community. And tonight, we're just so grateful to have all of our officials and department heads who are sharing it with us tonight, who will be giving us valuable information about the things that they do day to day and for keeping us safe. And so again, thank each of you. We're so grateful tonight to have also with us District Two Commissioner, Vice Chair Neet Robinson, who is sharing in with us in the town hall. And again, I'm going to turn it over now into the hand of our deputy Chief of Staff, Amen Sister Ashley LaRoe. And again, I just want to thank each of you for coming tonight. And we'll hear from the people who we have on panel tonight and their various organizations or departments that they represent. And so at this time, if Ashley could come and she'll take us and lead us into our town hall tonight. Thank you so very much.
Got to take this down to my level. I'm a little bit shorter than everybody else in the room. So good evening. Thank you guys so much for being here. As the Commissioner said, my name is Ashley LaRoe. I am the Chief of Staff for the County Manager. We have a wonderful panel tonight. Very excited. Thank you all for being here. I've asked the panel to go through and we're going to start on the end. And introduce your department. Tell us a little bit about what you guys are responsible for, what all you have jurisdiction over, how you work with public safety as a whole. And then once we get through that panel, we're going to open it up to questions for anyone in the audience. Sound like a plan? All right, I'll turn it over.
Well, I'm Craig Ogilvy and I'm the Director for Henry County Accountability Courts. Most people say, what is that? If a person is incarcerated in this county for a crime committed, they have few options. Some of those are prison or long-term jail or both. Or they can come to one of our court programs in Accountability Court. So we have Drug Court, we have Mental Health Court, and we have a Veterans Treatment Court. And each one of those deals with a person who, again, has involvement in the criminal justice system. They're with us from, if their misdemeanor from a period as short as 12 months up to 24-plus months. And in that time, they are supervised judicially under the courts. They are managed daily by our team and our staff. They have treatment with state-certified licensed therapists, case management, drug screens, job requirements, community service requirements, lots of things that keeps them focused and then redirected from the kind of decision-making that got them involved in the criminal justice system. So with that, and that's a real brief little snippet of what we do. With that, when a person completes an Accountability Court program, they are no longer facing long-term jail or prison. That comes off the table if they successfully graduate. And with that, they get their GEDs, they get jobs, they create jobs, they hire other people, they give back to the community, and they have their families restored, they have insurance, they pay taxes. And the biggest thing is when they have their lives restored from what they were. It's usually driven by substance use disorder and/or mental illness. And of course, in the case of our veterans dealing with PTSD, which is usually managed by self-medication, alcohol, things like that. We get them refocused, back on the right track, and they make our communities safer. And we love to celebrate them when they complete successfully. So that's what we do in Accountability Courts.
Hello, I am Tamika Kendrick. I am the 911 Director here in Henry County. What that means is we answer all emergency and non-emergency calls for service in Henry County. We dispatch the police department, all the police departments, both fire departments, the county and the city of McDonough, the Sheriff's Department, animal control, anybody that is on our radios for emergency services, we dispatch them. All of our dispatchers are certified as emergency medical dispatchers, which means that they have a certification just to take medical calls. So it's a very specific thing. It's a specific training that the Medical Director of Piedmont Henry signs off on. And each one of our dispatchers are certified. They're also certified by the state. They're post-certified, just like police officers and firefighters. Our dispatchers are certified the same way. We have a really cool service in Henry County. It's called Right Sight. And that service, we partnered with the Fire Department. And when people call and have non-emergent calls, where they normally would get an ambulance and we would have an ambulance tied up because somebody stubbed their toe or hit their elbow on the bed or they have a toothache, we now can transfer them to Grady Doctors and they can do a telemed service over the phone and get them a prescription or get them to urgent care or something like that. So we're not tying up our ambulances and running out of ambulances throughout the day. Last year, we took about 400,000 calls, so we're pretty busy. One really quick stat that I wanted to tell you guys about. The national standard says that we are supposed to process 911 calls. Ninety percent of our 911 calls within 15 seconds. Ninety percent of our 911 calls within 15 seconds, we're averaging anywhere between 94 and 96. So we're exceeding the national standard in our 911 center.
Good evening. I want to stand up. For the next 20 minutes, I'm just kidding. I'm Ryan Morrison. I'm the Director for Emergency Management and Homeland Security. So I'm going to, it's kind of easy to kind of look at our organization as a whole by simplifying it. We deal with preparedness, response, recovery, and mitigation. So preparedness activities, we typically have courses that you all can take free of charge. You get a free bag. So if you're interested in a cert, we do have a table out here. It's Community Emergency Response Team. So you can learn about how better ways to protect your family, your community, all that good stuff. So I definitely encourage you all to take a look into that. You can always email us and we'll get you that. Have a card too for y'all. So we have preparedness response. During a response, we essentially make sure that everybody has the coordination, communication, collaboration, and all those words, just to make sure everyone is on the same page, that we're operating on a common platform. It's a lot of big words, but essentially is just make sure we get people what they need. Pretty simple stuff. During the disaster and even after disaster, we go through the recovery phase. So it's all of your reimbursement back from the federal government. So there's two types of federal reimbursement, which is your public assistance. That pays us back what we spent. And there's individual assistance, which is very rare, especially nowadays. And FEMA is kind of going through some things right now, but it's to the individuals, to the citizens as well. So recovery and the mitigation is one of my favorite. It's just to lessen the impact. We know we're going to get bad stuff, but how do we actually lessen whatever it is? So it's hard sometimes, but a lot of it's dealing with flooding, which is the costliest of all the disasters we have flooding here. And I think y'all all know by watching news, we have meteors, winter storms, tornadoes. We got a little bit of everything. And don't sleep on hurricane season because it still impacts us greatly, even in the metro, all the way up here because we're going to get those straight-line winds. So that's the easiest way to explain what we do. And that was actually less than 20 minutes. Thank you.
There we go. I see the lights on. Good evening. I'm Pat Wilson. I'm your Fire Chief for Henry County Fire Rescue. Very honored to be able to serve in this capacity. The Fire Rescue Department, obviously, you know, when you hear fire, you think about things that are on fire. That's what we respond to. But we're more than that. We're all hazards response team. We are made up of right at 410 personnel covering 16 fire stations throughout the county. We also assist with incidents within the city of McDonough through automatic aid. We are also your EMS provider, so we have 14 ambulances that respond to medical emergencies throughout the county. We are a team that's dedicated to the community. Bottom line. Our goal is to be able to respond to any type of emergency within the county. That's, we've had trench calls, so even responded to meteorites that fall through homes. We do a little bit of it all. We have an amazing, amazing prevention team. That includes our community outreach program. Last year, I think we touched almost 25,000 citizens in Henry County through education and helping people to be better prepared for fire and emergency medical and other emergencies within their homes. We also do all the county inspections on buildings. Our team also does fire investigations. In fact, we had a major incident a few months ago at the tower warehouse. Our team not only did the investigation, but they have secured, I believe, an indictment on the person on that fire. So our team is active in a lot of different levels. And then I'd be remiss if I didn't say, man, we get to work with some amazing folks with our public safety teams that are sitting here on this panel tonight at all levels, from our Sheriff's Department, our Henry County PD, 911, our EMA, our courts. I know we come over, we do some speaking engagements with them. To me, this is what it's all about. It's about the team. It's about being vibrant, innovative, connected, and exceptional here in Henry County. And that is what you get with Henry County Fire Rescue. I'll pass the mic down to my good friend, Chief Mike Ireland, our Public Safety Director and Police Chief.
Well, thank you, Pat. Appreciate it. Well, first let me say thank you guys for coming. This is important, to be a part of this community and for you to come out and be interested in your, in your public safety team. My name is Chief Mike Ireland. Been the chief for a couple of years, the deputy chief for about seven years. Also the Public Safety Director, which include 911, Homeland Security, and the Fire Department. I can tell you this. The ones that actually do this job within the police department are those men and women that you see sitting over there. They're the ones, I got two deputy chiefs, I got precinct commanders here, I got special operation, I got code enforcement. I have all of those individuals here. And the reason that they're here is because they're the one that's going to answer your questions. Because they will tell you that, I don't know. My job is to provide the tools that they need to do their job. And I must say, I must tell you this, they do an amazing job for your community. It's okay, you can do that. One of the important things that we have going on this week is school, beginning of school. School is going to be starting. And so I do have the School Resource Commander. He's the School Resource Officer Commander. He's here. So if you have any question in reference to school, because you know, the first day of school, kids are always getting on the wrong bus and they're getting home late. And so that gentleman back there will be able to answer all your questions. Again, thank you all for coming. Appreciate it.
Good evening. I'm Mike Yarborough. I'm the Chief Deputy here at the Henry County Sheriff's Office. I'm here to represent our Sheriff, Reginald B. Scandret. Thank you all for coming tonight. I don't know what the deal was, but the chief and director here leaned over, said he wanted me to thank him for something. You know, I appreciate you. I don't know what it is. But he is doing a great job. We appreciate the partnership. So representing the Henry County Sheriff's Office, so when you think of courts, the jail, and you think of the field operations and then basic administrations. So in our jail, we are the ones that are tasked to house and care for over 800 inmates in our jail system. That's everything from feeding to housing and their medical and mental health care. We can talk about that later on, is how important that is. In our field operations, that's going to cover things such as your warrants, civil processes, and other crime enforcement. Then you've got the court system. When you are unfortunate enough to have to go to the court, you're going to be met with the Henry County Sheriff's Office. And I hope you see a great and professional team there. I know they're doing each and every day, making sure that it's secure. With over 150,000 visitors to our court so far this year, it keeps us quite busy. One of the most important things I would like to tell you about the Henry County Sheriff's Office is our commitment to restorative justice. Over three and a half years ago, we opened up our Restorative Center. Because one of the things that happens is people go into jail, you may think we want you here, but we don't. We want you to return back to your home, back to the community, but in a way that's going to make sure that you can thrive and be a valuable member of that community again. And it is possible. We've had more than 3,600 people go through any part of our restorative programs. Everything from alcohol anonymous to our welding program, to the virtuous women, as well as many other facets, even including GED programs. With over 300 graduates, only seven has returned in the last three and a half years. That's something that I think deserves a round of applause for that one, as we're all pleased for that. So as we go through the night, if you have questions, I hope we can support and let you know anything that you may want to ask about the Sheriff's Office and this great partnership between me and the Director here. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. So that was a fantastic, very, very high-level synopsis of what everybody does. I know that we also have animal control, which is part of PD. We have, every single department has brought their entire crew, as you can see. There's a lot that they didn't touch on, but I wanted to make sure that we mentioned. Almost all of them have some sort of citizens academy. There are ways to get involved, to learn more, really dig into the details of each of the departments, that we will make sure that all of that information is available on our website. But at this point, I want to turn it over to everyone who has graced us with their presence this afternoon. So if you have any specific questions, you don't, if you don't remember their name, just the department. If you could please come up to the mic that's over here in the center, so that way we can capture all of the questions, that would be great. And if not, I will ask Mr. Morrison to do another 20-minute synopsis on all things disasters and tornadoes and hurricanes. Any questions? The floor is open.
Thank you, panel. Good afternoon. My name is Katherine Grainger. So my first question is for Mr. Yarborough. You mentioned the restorative justice. Kudos. Wonderful. My question is, do we have restorative justice program for our youth? My daughter, when she was in high school, she volunteered and served through, I think it was called Nakasa, and it was focused on a teen court program for restorative justice. So does Henry County have a similar program?
So from the Sheriff's Office, what I can speak on is basically what we call our S3 program, or Standing Up Students for Success. So what we do is we really focus on our middle school students, a little younger, a little older, and try to attach them to multiple programs within our office. And we can get you that number back there to help with that. We don't take, so in the jail, we are an adult jail. So juveniles are going to be within the juvenile capacity. So we don't really attach ourselves to those type of restorative programs. Outside of our youth programs that we do each and every weekday throughout the year, we try to really cross over multi-jurisdictional collaboration with our teams, as well as just the S3 program really engages at a detailed level where we talk to the children. We really give a, we try to give them that approach and understanding of what the yes and no questions are. You go yes to this and that path can take you down the wrong path and you can end up back in the jail. And what does that look like? The other questions where you're choosing life, you're choosing the things that are going to lead to a better life for you, your family going forward, and what that future can look like, we give those examples. Then we try to identify throughout that program, multiple ways to attach these children to mentors, mentoring groups, as well as other developmental programs to ensure they have activities that can keep them out of the streets, out of just trying to find any other things to do that they shouldn't be doing. Everything from sports to education to arts and music.
Okay, excellent. Well, that's beautiful. Excellent. Thank you very much. Anybody else before I? Okay. So you mentioned keeping people out of the streets. And in Henry County and in Sector 138, we are having a very large homeless persons population. Can anyone speak to in regards to what are we doing as a community in regards to the homeless persons population and public safety?
Do you have the person for that?
I'm very glad that you asked that specific question. So Ms. Amanda will introduce herself and her department. But she's one of our very few hybrid departments where we include her with our public safety team because of all the reasons that she will outline, but she also does a lot with just community outreach. So it's, she's one of our hybrids. So we, thank you for being here so that you could help answer.
You're welcome. Thank you for asking that question. That is definitely something that is heavy on my heart as well. And so 18, 19 months ago, the county made the decision to form the department that I direct. It's the Community Resources Division of Public Safety here at Henry County Government. Is that working? Sorry. So sorry. Could you hear me okay? Okay. So 18 months ago, they formed the department that I direct, and I work alongside each of these individuals, especially the police officers. They'll call me often if they come across someone that doesn't have a place to go. Our commissioners have a really heavy burden to carry on, you know, the homelessness in this community. They all have a heart for doing something to make a difference. And that's why they hired me and they've allowed me to hire staff members that are working alongside me in order to make a difference in the unhoused population here in Henry County. There's still a lot to come to help that situation, but what I will say we've done so far, we've made a significant financial commitment to help individuals- so far, we've made a significant financial commitment to help individuals who have no shelter whatsoever, and we've placed them in hotels for periods of time, while we work with collaborating agencies to help them receive long-term affordable housing, to get them placed so that they can be independent again. I will tell you that it's not always possible to get them to a point where they can stand on their own. We have some other contributing factors to the unhoused population that are really hard to fix really quickly. Mental illness is one of those, drug addiction is another. It's just a heartbreaking situation. But I know personally that this group of leaders here, and our commissioners, are very committed to making a difference. There were funds set aside and sputted, is it five, six? I can't remember which one it was. But there are funds set aside to develop a community resource center, so that we have the ability to provide additional services to those individuals. I will tell you, this has not been made public yet, but my department's just been established at Public Safety Headquarters in a suite that they've renovated for us. The Atlanta Regional Commission will be joining us in that suite, so that we can help with workforce development as well. But there is a number advertised all over the county. Anyone can call at any time to get assistance if they are on the street. If we can help them, we will. The county takes it seriously. They've devoted a lot of money to making a difference over the last 13 months especially. We've spent a large sum of money helping people who are unhoused. So the phone number, if you want to just make a note, 770-288-7506 is a number that anyone can call. That number rings straight to my desk or my cellphone. I'll set it to roll to my phone when we're outside of office hours, and we'll help them. If they call, we answer, and we get them where they need to be. But remember too, it takes the entire community to make a difference in that population of people. It's more than just the commissioners can do, more than just I and my staff can do. We all have to come together and work together, step up to the plate, and get some things done that will make a difference for those individuals. Nobody seems to want the unhoused population in their area, but then, when we ask for assistance, nobody really steps forward and does much with us either. So if you have an interest and a heart for that population of people in our community, I would love to talk to you more directly, to get your feedback regarding what we can do better, and to know how we can serve that population of people, to make a difference for our entire community.
Thank you, Amanda. There were two things that you mentioned that I really just wanted to make sure that we hone in on.
Sure.
Our city partners have been fantastic as we've been building this out. I really wanted to make sure that we recognize the city of Stockbridge. They've been a fantastic partner with us. Every time there's severe weather, they're always one of the first people that we call from our city standpoint at least. They've been fantastic. But the timeline, what you were talking about, of how long it can sometimes take people, it made me remember a question that I wanted to ask our accountability courts. Could you talk a little bit about the number of people that you serve, but more specifically about what that timeline looks like? Because it's not an easy fix, and it ties directly into what Amanda has to do as well. All of the components kind of intertwine here.
Sure, it's, it is very intertwined. We are with the Sheriff's Office and with first responders from the Fire Department and PD, but with respect to the homeless situation, so as far as numbers, we have served nearly 500 people since Accountability Courts started in this county, 2009. That does not include the DUI court population, which probably would be, push that number up to about 700 or 800 folks. And a lot of times though, our people that are referred to us are homeless, and it's a real problem. Or transportation is an issue, and they don't have adequate transportation or somewhere to live. And, and currently, the programs require that you have somewhere to live, so that you can get the services you need, and the treatment involved, and things like this, so you can go get work, or school, and things like this. So we are, we are desperately working hard to try to build up enough awareness in the county, so that we can partner with Amanda and other agencies to better develop ways to get some, some housing, which is desperately needed. Do you want to add to that?
I did. I wanted to add, it's been so great to work with you, especially, we were able to help you with one specific veteran to get long-term housing and get him rehabilit, two, okay, two now, good. What I wanted to say was, my department has helped over 310 families in the last 16 months, and the county has spent well over $300,000 helping those families in the last 16 months. So it's a serious effort, it really is, and it means a lot to every commissioner on our board, it means a lot to our county manager, our deputy county manager, and it certainly means a lot to me as well. So thank you for bringing that up, and I'd love to talk with you more.
Does anybody else have any questions from the audience? While we are walking up to the mic, things to be thinking about. It is hot outside. I don't know if you guys noticed, so once we get this question, I want to ask our EMA Director to talk a little bit about cooling stations and what that looks like, but we will do that after your question.
Okay. Hey, everyone, thank y'all for your service. My name is Feedra Thomas, and my passion is our elderly. So my question is, do we go and check on the elderly since it's hot? Like, anybody? Fire? Police? Because I wrote the number down for her, so I'm definitely going to call her to see if there's something that we can do. No? Nobody?
The short answer is yes.
Yes. It's more than likely, we do do that, but on certain occasion, we'll have family member who maybe live out of state, or maybe working or something, and their elderly parents are home, they'll call and they'll ask us to do that, and we do check on them, especially in this heat. No, no, there's not a dedicated individual or dedicated unit that does that. We do that on a case-by-case basis.
However, outside of public safety, our Senior Services Department goes to these homes of individuals, seniors, and do home checks there, to make sure. They also provide meals for those individuals, long-term. If we know that there's a weather event coming, or any kind of extreme conditions, they make sure that the meals are covered through the Meals on Wheels program. And even today, we were pulled in by the chair to start an initiative for seniors, where we're going to host multiple senior outreach seminars with our public safety team, so we can go over best practices as we're moving into the winter months, making sure everybody's prepared for that type, type of situation.
Thank you, Deputy County Manager Johnson.
Is that a program that the seniors need to register for? Or are we using our tax exemption data to build the data pool of the seniors?
Repeat the question. So the question was, is that something that they have to register for, or are we using our tax data to identify those individuals? That is a part of a program that they are already established in, so they must be a part of our senior center programs to be on that list, whether that's the in-home care or Meals on Wheels. They have to be a part of our program for us to know about them, know where they are, do those home visits during these times. And they can do that, you can go on our county website, you can stop by a senior center. If you have further questions, we can get you all the information you need. Our team is great on the senior center side, so please, if you have anybody, if you know who can get involved, send them to us. We'd love to show them around our senior centers and get to know them more.
So on that note of who to call, as Chief Ireland mentioned, school starts back up this week. Chief, or Major Maddox, I'm sure he's going to tag you in at this. Tomorrow's open house. Who do you call if the lights aren't working at a school zone this week? Or who do you call if the traffic's really bad? That, that's a trick question.
Call the county manager. Just kidding. Let me just say, you know, leadership is something, but without solid leadership, an organization like this would not run the way that it does. And I just want to give a hand to my county manager, Sheriff Matthews, and my deputy county manager, Mr. Kevin Johnson. But yeah, I will let Major Maddox, introduce you to Major Maddox. Like I said, he's in charge of our School Resource Officer, and he can answer those questions for you guys.
Thank you. Major Jeff Maddox, Henry County Police Department, School Resource Division. So we'll cover the back-to-school first. So open house is tomorrow. From 10 to 12, the Academy of Advanced Studies right here in the city of McDonough will have their open house, so students that are going to do dual enrollment classes, that may attend dual enrollment off-site, they'll attend at Academy of Advanced Studies. So over there, it's the old, if you're around here, it's the old Henry County High School before they made the new one now. So the traffic in that area will be a little bit more than normal, but as we know with Henry County traffic, it's pretty significant all the time. 1 to 3 is high school, and the high schools are in clusters. So there's 11 high schools in Henry County, and there's 12 middle schools. Austin Road Middle School up in Fairview sits as one of the standalone, but it's connected to the Stockbridge Cluster. 3 to 5 is middle school, and 5 to 7 is elementary. So again, all the schools are in clusters, so you should, the traffic will be isolated to mostly of the clusters. Now, there's standalone elementaries out there that are not connected to the clusters, and they're all over, because there's 28 elementary schools. There's 38 SROs that go into all the schools, except we are in high school, in middle school, and we're all assigned to an elementary school. So there's not a School Resource Officer inside of an elementary school. But our typical issues with elementary school revolve around parents and issues at the school. So we do go there and we do help those. There's very few incidents involving students in elementary school, because, you know, they're still beautiful and young, and they're learning. But they do get in trouble, don't get me wrong. We concentrate most of our efforts again in the middle and high school. The question about the lights not on, you should see as of today, thank you Captain Gotsey from Special Operations, who got those school flashing lights on. So they'll be on during the designated times, it's on the sign. Those are school zone, not the school zone cameras, I'll get to those in a minute. The school zone flashing lights just slow you down, and they change the speed limit in the school zones. And those are the yellow lights that will flash at certain times, they're not on all day long. Now, everybody's interested in the speed cameras. They are on all day long. They're on one hour before school starts, and they run all day long to keep a safe school zone and traffic at a slowed and reasonable pace in front of a school, because everybody knows when you're in front of a school, you see kids out playing on the playground, they're outside doing outside activities, they're out doing different things all throughout the school year. So those cameras run till one hour after school stops. 7:00 AM is the first door opens for elementary at 7:00 AM. So you can say at 6:00 AM, the speed cameras cut on. The last bell rings for dismissal in our middle schools are the last school out at 4:00 PM. Now, they're still on the way home, and so it runs one hour afterwards. Initial back-to-school issues, students on buses. They get on the wrong bus in the bus stop, they get off the wrong school somehow, not sure how, because most of them pick up by elementary, middle, and high, but we have kids that get on and off the wrong bus. They'll specifically get off at the wrong stop, especially our little kindergartners, our first graders and our second graders that enjoy riding the bus. Some of them will still fall asleep on the bus. And so we'll have our bus drivers that do their diligent checks, and they'll find kids that are on the back of the bus when they go back and cycle back around from picking up at elementary, they ring up to the high school and they do their bus check. Soon as they do their bus check, they realize they still have a little elementary kid on the bus. My phone will start ringing. You can call the school district at the bus barn, if you're a mom or a dad and you're missing a student, please do not panic. I know you're going to call 911, it's okay. Ms. Kendrick and her team will get those calls routed over to my staff, and we will start making sure these children are located. We will get a lot of missing children calls, and we try to ensure the parents don't panic. We have direct communication lines with the bus barn, and there's a bus barn west now, and there's a bus barn east, so it should make bus traffic a little bit better for them and their staff. And they've redone some routes, so none of the buses have to cross I-75. It's basically, they've tried to keep everything on the west side of 75, all the way up through Stockbridge on one side, and they, of course, the east side, on the east side. And it's just, they use I-75 as the main thoroughfare to cut the county for bus route. So they've tried to make it more effective. Buses will be out starting Thursday. So we put some notes out on our social media. If you follow us on social media, you'll see, and I think the Fire Department has agreed to push that out on their platforms, 911 Center is going to push it out on theirs, and I haven't saw the Sheriff Department yet, but I'm going to ask them to post it on theirs. Any and all, little tidbits. The kids are going to be out early, so watch your speed in your neighborhoods and in those areas. There are going to be lots of buses out, so lots of bus lights, and we've had Addy's Law come from Henry County. If you haven't remembered that, a few years ago, a child was run over by somebody that passed a school bus that was stopped, and we created Addy's Law through Henry County. They changed it where bus districts, all school districts should try to make it where the bus doors open only to the side where they're picking up the child. However, not every route can do that because of the networking. So there are still some routes out there where the buses have to stop, and the children, the children still have to cross the road. But they've made every effort to reorganize their routes, so the buses pick up only on the side where the child has to walk directly onto the bus and not cross the road. We're not worried about the darkness yet, because we're still in a good time of the year for daylight to be there when the kids are starting to get out, but they will have to get out early. Some of those kids have to get out on their bus routes by 5:45 to 6 o'clock, because the buses have to make several stops, they have to make several routes to get through all the schools. You've got 28 elementaries that's picking up all these kids. So these buses are running multiple routes and dropping off multiple times. I live out in the Ola area, so I stay in the Ola Cluster in the mornings and the afternoons as part of my duties, and I will say that those bus drivers come through those schools several times sometimes, to make plenty of stops to get all the kids picked up. Afternoon will be the same way. The traffic in the afternoon will get a little bit congested, especially around the school areas. And I know this is not the district for Dutch Town, I don't believe, but Dutch Town is a popular one for traffic issues. The Union Grove area gets very trafficky. It's just a lot of road network, a lot of schools, a lot of development, and we do the best we can with our Special Operations Division joins us on the first several days of school, and they continue to support us throughout. The cities get involved with us. We'll answer the 911 calls as best we can. We try to make it to where the traffic is flowed. We have 55 school crossing guards, we're hiring a few more. We're not quite at 55, but we have all that we need to manage all of our school crossing zones. Please watch out for those folks. They, they are hardworking, they are some of my hardest-working folks. They're only seasonal employees, but they love these kids. They want to make sure they get out there and jump out in the middle of a road in Henry County traffic, to make sure they're stopping and getting kids and buses and parents in and out of all those schools. We do the best we can to be there with them, but the SROs have to concentrate their efforts inside the school. So we won't be outside the school, we'll be inside the school. But the schools have done a lot for school safety. I'll just touch on this very briefly. They've got upgraded camera systems, they got door buzzer technology where you have to show your ID. They don't let you in the school, even as a parent, you have to show your ID, they'll send the kid outside. If you have a meeting, of course, you will go in the building, but generally picking up, they've made, they have open door buzzers, where if a door is left open longer than two seconds, it sets a buzzer off in the office to make sure that they know they have an open door somewhere in the building, and it tells them where. They have campus safety monitors that support us, they have campus safety and security monitors, which is a secondary position. All those are through the Board of Education, they're not Henry County Police Department positions, but they work hand-in-hand with us. I think I have tried to touch on everything I can. If I miss something and you have an additional question, I'll answer it. If you think of something while you're sitting there, I will be right there in the back of the room, or I can come back up and answer any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the audience? I see a look of pondering over here. It's okay. I can bring the mic to you.
I'm a little nervous, so please forgive me. My hand is shaking as we speak. Thank everybody for your service, and y'all coming out and addressing any issues or questions that maybe we have. So speaking of, we know the traffic's going to be bad, because schools are starting back up, and we get that, and we are praying for our kids. So as I notice, as I'm driving, I live in a neighborhood where, and maybe I need to come back at another time, that this, that this can be addressed, but I think it falls in the category of public safety, because it is- of public safety, because it is a safety issue to me, in my opinion. So in my neighborhood, it's just hard to get out of. It just is. When I was growing up in McDonough, Henry County, whatever you wanna call it, it was one traffic light and one McDonald's. So y'all probably know where I'm going at. But let me just give you one example. Up here at 20, right here, there's always somebody starting the roadway, starting the street, working on it, and then it ceases. Then they may move somewhere else, they don't stop this, it may move somewhere else. They working on it, paving the roads, making roadways, then it ceases. So it, to me, I don't know anybody can address this issue or not, but it falls to the point with me, it's like, do we need more workers to work on the roadways? Because as we're driving around McDonough, we see lots of neighborhoods going up, lots of apartments, but the roads are not being tackled. To me, it doesn't make sense. It was up to me, which is not, I would've started on the roads and still putting houses up and apartments, but I know there's planning and zoning and all that good stuff, so yeah, that's my thing. Can anybody say anything about that? Yes ma'am, so I will note that our DOT and our SLOs departments are not here tonight,
but road infrastructure has been a really big focus for us, something that we're really trying to make sure that we keep in the forefront of all of our plans. Your specific question, I'll get with you after and get some more information, we'll try and get some more details for you. But it brings up a point that I wanted to note. If fire, PD, EMA, 911 specifically, can you guys talk about your involvement with the planning and zoning process in buildings when we have developments coming in? What kind of reviews you guys do, what you guys look at to help factor in some of those concerns that you brought up?
So I will defer to our Fire Marshal, Michael Black. He's in the back, I'm gonna ask him to step up. He works directly with planning and zoning. That is a big part of what we do, because for us, we have to respond to those calls, whether it be medical, fire, or other types of emergencies. So Chief Black can talk to you all about some of the issues and concerns that we have regarding the codes and what role we play in the fire department.
Good afternoon. My name's Michael Black, I'm the Fire Marshal for Henry County. We pretty much are responsible for federal, state, and local fire safety ordinances and applications. One of the things we do do is all commercial structures built in Henry County have to go through the fire department for plan review, as well as residential site developments. And as part of the residential site developments, one of the things we concentrate on are the making sure that the subdivisions have the proper number of exits entrances based on the number of homes in that subdivision. We also look at the width of the streets and the cul-de-sacs and the spacing of the hydrants, because traffic does affect the fire service, so does overcrowding and parking in the streets. So those are things that are noted on the plan review, that we work well with, with the planning and zoning, as well as the building department, which does the exact same thing. So it was just one example of how we affect it.
Captain Gottse, are you sleeping?
Yes sir.
Okay. I think Captain Gottse can answer some of those questions, because I think he sits on the review board for what the, there you go. You see, I force them to do things like that. Put him on the spot.
Yes sir. I'm Captain Gottse, I'm with our special operations division. I sit on a couple of the review boards and basically what it is, is as everything's being planned, they come and they, I think usually a member from every department is on that board, and they go through and ask us what is required of us if they build this subdivision here. What is required of fire, what is required of EMA, 911. So we just go through and we answer the questions of, how much more policing would it take? How much more infrastructure would it take? How much more of everything would it take if this subdivision or warehouse or whatever the planning is for is put up? So as those meetings go along, we just answer those questions as it pertains to all of our units or our divisions.
County own, how about the city?
Yes, the cities have their own planning and zoning. This is just for county, yes.
Okay, so now we're crossing over, I guess, two different areas and departments. Based upon the total number of expansion, residential expansion, then what is the forecast for additional public service?
You know, I can tell you this. One of the biggest problem that we have in the public safety field is fill-in positions. And that just don't affect us in Henry County, it's nationwide. My friend to the left can tell you they're experiencing the same problem in the jail. The fire department can tell you they're experiencing the same, same problem, fill-in firefighters and EMTs and those position. When it comes to the law enforcement aspect of thing, the police department, one of the things that the FBI say, because we all try to follow their kind of procedures of how they do things, and they're requiring for every 1,000 citizen that we have, we need 2.5 police officer. That is what they're saying. So in lieu of building subdivision and those things, that's why it's so instrumental when these public safety team sit on these board to communicate with them, to let them know that if we're gonna build these, these projects, we have to have the coverage of a law enforcement officer. And that's one of the reason that we're continuously hiring and continuously training and continuously going through the process to make sure that, that there's coverage within the county. So that is a big part of it.
And one of the things I would like to remind us of is the new academy that we have here in Henry County, that has, I don't know what week they're in now, but they, fourth week, that they're training new cadets to try to prepare these young people to serve in public safety and to keep our communities safe. It was stated about development, I just wanted to remind the citizens that Henry County is a political subdivision of the state of Georgia, as are the other 158 counties. And sometimes it's often thought that the county is just doing what the county wants to do, but that is far from the truth. We are governed by the laws and the constitution of the state of Georgia. And so even in developments and rezonings and those types of things, we have to follow what is called the zoning procedural laws. And there are certain reasons that we can deny development. And there's a thin line, I would say, between inconveniences and public safety. I know we're all inconvenienced by traffic. Nobody likes to sit in traffic. I remember it used to take seven minutes to go from Locust Grove to McDonough and it's no longer that. It's a little inconvenience. And so I just, you know, want us to understand that even in the development, you know, we do bring people to the table, the fire and the police, you know, to figure out what we need to make sure that these areas and these developments are covered. And so we're trying to play catch-up in some areas and trying to get a lot of the road and infrastructure where it needs to be. Me and Barry, who's here tonight, used to work on the paving crew here in DOT. And so sometimes you may look at a development and you may not see certain things going on. There were times where we had to pave some of the high populated or traveled roads at night when everybody is asleep. So we may not see them sometimes, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they're not out working, because we would work at night and then sleep during the day, because we couldn't be out there paving in the midst of all of the traffic. And so again, we are trying to do the best we can with what we have in the laws that we are governed by. I tell people that when we take our oath, it is always taken to the constitution of the state of Georgia and we have to abide by those laws, because they basically dictate to us, you know, what we can and what we can't do as well. Henry County is a Dillon's Rule, or Georgia rather, is a Dillon's Rule state, which means that we have no power other than that which is expressly or explicitly given to us by the state. There are sometimes that we can use Home Rule, but those are times, you know, may be far and few in between. And so I just don't want the people to think that we are just approving developments just to be doing it. We're trying to bring the best developments that we can if we can't stop it totally. But there are so many millions of dollars that have already been earmarked for road improvements and road widenings thankful, or thankfully to the citizens who voted for our SLOs. If you would look at our previous meetings, we've approved, again, millions of dollars just for our road improvements and road widenings. There are several that are in design, there are a few that are already in progress. And so we just ask that if you would give us just a little grace as we try to get this infrastructure and the road improvements together. And so I just wanted to, you know, just remind us of that, that there's zoning procedural laws and that we have to govern ourselves, even as officials, based upon the laws of the state of Georgia.
Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up the sheriff's office in this discussion point. So you asked a great question, how does it impact us? How does it affect across the public safety network? Well, with 815 average daily population in our jail currently, with a capacity of 877, as we grow and we live, work, and play, not all that living, working, and playing ends in a good night. So as the chief spoke on increasing that 2.5 per thousand, that means more arrests, that means more people coming to visit us at the jail. That means our capacity is at and expanding at a rate that's very difficult to keep up. We have been diligent across the commission and our county manager, as well as our other teams, in working towards the goals of increasing the capacity and capabilities that we must have, including in our court systems. We're all very much so aware of the growth that is important to our county, that we want to see, but we wanna see it done in a strategic manner. And we have to think through those things, because as we look to hire, we also gotta make sure that we have somewhere to place people and do so in a humane and caring manner, because irrespective of what the crime is or isn't, they have been alleged and we are charged to care for them and do so appropriately.
To piggyback on that, too, with accountability courts, one of the things that we look at is recidivism. That's just a fancy word to say recommitting of crimes. And one of our major goals is to reduce the recidivism rate. Same with the sheriff's office, they have restorative justice programs, and that's one of the sheriff's top six, is to reduce recidivism, reduce crime. That helps take pressure off of PD for having to have extra people, reduces court pressure, reduces jail pressure, and all of that saves money. And we've got a lot of great leaders in this room, I've worked for some and worked with a lot. And we're very grateful that the county management team has the difficult job to say, okay, we've got this piece of pie here, Commissioner, and all the commissioners, and we need to slice it in a certain way. So part of our leadership role is to figure out, how do we manage that piece of pie that we have to the most effective capacity to reduce our cost, save the taxpayers money while we're trying to do a great service to restore people to their families and livelihoods? So with that, you know, our recidivism rate, which means if you graduate accountability courts, we track you for three years after that graduation. If you've not been arrested, then you've met the target. And so far, our recidivism rate is 17%. Compared to non-accountability court treatment, it would be a 77%. So do the math, that's what we're saving. And with partnership with, with, you know, everybody in this room here, that's our goal is to help keep that down, keep that pressure off, and we're just proud to be a part of it.
So when you think about the growth in the county from the fire department in, we know right now that we averaged about 1,200 additional calls annually over the last five or six years. So we're at 40, roughly 40,000 calls that our folks respond to with those 16 fire engines or fire stations, 14 ambulances, some QRVs and other units that are in the response matrix. So no doubt, it is a concern as the county continues to grow, how we manage those calls. I know our county manager and county management team, and they have worked with us on apparatus replacement plans. We're looking at, I believe, two additional stations that will come through SLOs over the next year or so. And we've already talked about the next, I think, eight fire stations, because we need 10 fire stations today. So coming up with a game plan for that. So we are working from the fire department in on a master plan that will help build that in and do it economically and do it feasibly, because it is a challenge finding people. You know, we've been blessed within fire rescue to be able to fill all our positions currently. We have almost 100 folks in recruit school that we're training today, that are going through firefighter training, EMT advanced training, and other levels of training that they have to have to go out and be able to serve this community. Excuse me. So I know that, you know, for us, it's always a concern, that's why we have Chief Black and his team that work closely with planning and zoning and the development of the county. And I think much of what Craig said, you know, with the strategic planning of the county, and I believe our county management team has done an amazing job in planning that out. Our Board of Commissioners work with us closely in helping us to come up with the best solutions to make sure that we're able to provide a great service for this community.
I've got a question. Why can't I hear tornado sirens inside of my house when it's raining outside? And why should I not call 911 when I can't hear the tornado sirens inside of my house when it's raining?
Great question. That was me. So, sorry, I like standing. No, yeah, this one's gonna be 40 minutes. So the tornado sirens are always a big hot topic for us, because I think there is a lot of just misunderstanding about what they can do and what they can't do. But a tornado siren is meant for outdoors. Some people can hear it inside their house, especially if you live right beside one. So we activate these monthly on the very first Wednesday of every month. We do that just to make sure they're functional and we make a lot of repairs. This year, we've spent quite some money making sure that they're good, replacing batteries, restoring AC power to them, currently working with the city of McDonough, and they just restored one now, they're working on another two. So that's the biggest thing. So outdoor sirens, but for you inside your house, we do have an app, it's called Regroup. I would suggest, please downloading this app if you haven't, if you haven't heard of it. We have information out here on that front little, little tiny table out there with the green tablecloth. But download that on your phone, it's gonna give you all of the necessary alerts and notifications that you need. And I know I jokingly said it a minute ago, but we have had a crazy year just with all the winter storms that came and the tornadoes, four confirmed tornadoes, y'all, that's unheard of. I've been in the business for over 20 years. I know I look like a little baby. If I shaved this off, you would think I was probably 12 years old, let's be honest. All right, but, but I've been over 20 years and I've never seen anything like this. So, and that's why, I mentioned before, is once that hurricane season comes rolling around, you know, we're in it now, but it's really gonna start hitting, towards the late end of August into September, you'll start to see those, like I said, those straight-line winds that can really do a lot of damage. Flooding, you can, you can name it, we'll get all of those things all rapidly on us. So the app's really, really great, it's gonna teach you a lot of great things, and we're always available to help walk you through and download it as well. So it's just one of those extra measures. So you have the outdoor sirens, you have your Regroup, if you have a, you know, some type of weather radio inside your house, those are great. People still use us, believe it or not. And also just the news in general. So if you don't make it a habit of just waking up in the morning and saying, hey, what's the weather gonna look like? Let's bring back those days, you know what I'm saying? Let's say, personal accountability, let's see it, so, you know, if you always have your umbrella out, you know, put it in your car, those kind of things. I think sometimes we've forgotten. I think sometimes we've forgotten, and even as public safety here, you know, our, our years of service, sometimes we neglect things too. But we don't want to neglect you all and the safety of all y'all. So that's why we're always looking for new ways, new measures, whatever we can do to help protect you. So, and I use up my hands a lot when I talk. It's like I'm like a magician over here, so, but yes, that's my.
If anyone else has any lingering questions, please come on up to the mic. But before Ryan sits down, can you please briefly talk about the cooling stations?
I was going to hit that one too. So cooling stations, when the heat index is going over 100, I know we're probably on the lower end of the metro. So we try, if, if there's staffing available, if there is, if there's a location and there's not, you know, camps and stuff rolling, we're going to have one available. I know we had one today, one to five, or 12 to five here at Red Hawk Park. We're going to have it tomorrow too, although it's probably going to be raining in the afternoon, so we'll probably have to revisit that. But it doesn't matter about the rain, we're still going to get 100 on the index. It's, it's going to be pretty brutal. So if you know the people, I know we talked about the homeless population, trust me, they know that we have these out there. So, you know, they, they know the services that we provide, but we always have the fans rolling, we have the water to drink, and we just like, we fellowship with, with whoever comes, but especially the homeless population. So if you, if you're out in the community and you see them, let them know that we're out there. We do a pretty good job of communicating with all of our homeless population as well. So many of them, they know, know us by name. So, but please encourage it. This, this is what it's there for. This is, this is what your taxpayers' dollars are paying for because we want to make sure that a lot more heat-related injuries and illnesses than, than coldness, believe it or not. So we just want to make sure that we get everyone out there, we get the news spread out, we put it on social media, we share it with all of our public safety teams and all of our volunteer organizations, nonprofits, faith-based as well, so.
Just really brief, Robert Kolpak, just want to say to everybody, to staff, I've never had a cross word with any Henry County staff. Sherry Matthews, awesome county manager, and everybody in this room, I know most of y'all real well, thank y'all, great crew, they've come to the house a lot to help with family, appreciate y'all. Question, C Click Fix, that's what I use a lot. Is there, and, and I, I got the app where when I, if I'm out of town, my phone beeps and tells me there's a storm, so I can call the families, they get in the basement. Is there anything else or anything you guys like so the citizens can know about beyond those two?
Major Schumate, you want to talk about C Click Fix and code enforcement? We just wrapped up our District Four and then this past weekend, District Two Community Cleanup Day, so I wanted to make sure that this entire team, who they have shown up for every single one of them, thank you, but a special thank you to Major Schumate and Code Enforcement, they have been really helping us lead that.
Good evening, thank you for being here. C Click Fix, it's not just for code enforcement, it's pretty much for most of the departments through the county, DOT. So if you come across a pothole or animal control or any issue like that, you can go on the app, it's very easy. One of the things, you can actually put your location of where you're at, so it helps us to identify where the problem is. But we use C Click Fix a lot with code enforcement, it is one of the ways you can report an issue to us, you can call us or come to the office or email. But if there is a complaint or something like that, I know you can go there, tall grass, commercial vehicles, junk vehicles, things, C Click Fix. But it is a great tool, we use it all the time, but it's for every department. I think even the police have it. I think, does fire use it? I'm not too sure. Yeah, so it's, it's, it is a great tool for us. So download the C Click Fix app if you can. Any other questions about that? Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to put Commissioner Price on the spot and ask him if he has any closing comments.
Yes, I do. First, I just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, for taking time out of your dinner time to come in to share with us and hear the presentation. I also want to thank these amazing individuals who I believe are our unsung heroes. Oftentimes, there are a lot of things that we see in the county, but a lot of times the work that you do behind the scenes sometimes go unnoticed and sometimes unappreciated. So I just want to kind of start on the end with Mr. Craig. When I first got on the board, we got invites to graduations, and so I had an opportunity to go to a couple of graduations to some of the people that had went through the program. And it was amazing to see the transformation that some of the lives of the people and listening to the testimonies of those individuals who had an opportunity not to go to jail, but to go through the program and to change their lives. And so I just want to thank you publicly and for what your department does in not just locking up people and throwing away the key, but really investing in them and helping them to become, excuse me, good productive citizens of the community. And to Mr. Mika, we talk about first responders, but your department is really the first responders of the first responders. Nobody wants to call 911 and be put on hold. And so when I heard the stats of the amazing job that you all do, it blew me away, the number of calls you all take per day without putting anybody on hold. So I just want to thank you all, your department again. And, and Mr. Ryan, thank you, I get my texts whenever something is going on, it, it, it pees my phone, and so it gives me an opportunity to pay attention to what's going on. To Chief Pat Wilson, who's recently got in this role, he's an awesome guy, love his job, and everything that I hear about him is always positive. So I just want to thank you for what you all do. And to Chief Ireland, thank you so much again for keeping our streets safe, you and your team, because you never know when you need the police until you need them. And so when you need them, you want them to come. And so thank you for the work that you do to keep all of our citizens safe. And to Deputy Sheriff Chief, Chief Deputy Yarborough, thank you again for the amazing job that you all do. It's not difficult dealing with people who oftentimes are on their way to prison because unfortunately that may be the route that some people will be going. And so thank you for the unsafe work that you all do just to keep us safe. I wrote some things down. One of the things I think that will happen, or should happen, is that whenever we are talking about public safety, that it has to be a community effort, that it takes each of us to make sure that our community is where it needs to be and that it is safe. One of the things that I would like to challenge some of our nonprofits and churches is with the homelessness situation, is to take a more proactive role in that. I know every so often, my church, we get together and we go feed the homeless, and Ms. Amanda has been a valuable resource because they know where all of the homeless camps are. And so if you have a desire to help those who are less fortunate, she knows exactly where they are. And not only do she know them, they know her. They, on first-name basis with phone calls, when we got to where we were, they had her number, and they were able to call her to verify that we were where we were supposed to be. So again, thank you for the amazing job that you are doing. And then lastly, the county offers so much as it relates to education. One of the things that I was afforded the opportunity to do is to go through the CERT class back in 2009. I think I might have been one of the first graduates of that program, but it's the Citizens' Emergency Response Team. And it teaches you how to deal with disasters if they would happen to come. And so I know it was mentioned that they have a table set up. I would encourage you to please sign up for CERT so that you can go through there and be trained because sometimes we may be the people that are the first responders in our own communities. Because while you're waiting for 911, someone may need that immediate attention. And so you learn how to do those types of services that are an immediate need. So I would encourage you to sign up for CERT. Also had an opportunity to go through the Henry County Citizens Police Academy. I would never be a police officer, you've got to have some courage, but to be able to go on the ride along with Officer La Duke, and I think he still is employed, he was a field training officer at the time. Y'all laughing, y'all must know him. But it was just amazing. And I think there's also another class that we do, the government class, and a fire academy. I think there's a storm one. Okay, amen. And there's a storm one, I think, dealing with storms that I went through. And so there are so many different things that the county offers that I would encourage you to please get involved and to see what kind of education or teaching tools that are available just so that you can become informed citizens. I often say this, and then I'll be concluding, that you should never take anybody's word for anything that you need to know for yourself. And then that means, again, getting involved, taking these classes so that you can hear it directly. So again, thank you all, the citizens of District Four who have come today. My good friend, Ms. Christina, thank you so much for being here. So we have some, I made up this word at Church Sunday, that we have some native McDonhians here, amen. And so we're just so grateful to have you all sharing in with us tonight again as well. Ms. Feeder, she's from McDonough as well. And to those who have moved into our county, I've been battling a cold for the last three weeks, so I'm trying to get over it. But for those who have moved to our community, I think you've made the best decision because I believe Henry County is the best place that's in the United States of America. And with each of us working together, we can continue to make this place, and I know some people are not going to like when I say this, but it's going to make this place a desirable and sought-after place to live because truly it is one of the best places on this side of heaven. I'm going to go to church tonight, amen. Amen, I'll turn it back over to Christina. I mean, to Ashley, amen.
He's reading mine, so that's my middle name, so we're good. Thank you to everybody that joined us in person. If you are online, thank you for joining us as well. Staff will hang out for a few minutes if you have any lingering questions that you didn't want to ask in front of the group. We've got some tables set up on the side, and we will try and get them answered. If you get with me after, make sure we get that specific information, and be on the lookout for our next one. Thank you guys for coming.
And please visit the tables that have set up and take some material with you as you go. Thank you.